Public hearing called order. Roll call, please.
Councilman Queener.
Here.
Councilman McBride. Councilman Harrell.
Here.
Councilman Gann.
Here.
Councilman Hatmaker.
Here.
Councilwoman Manus.
Here.
Mayor Scott Burton.
Here. Public hearing today will be on ordinance number 683. This is amending ordinance 680 zoning code of the city of Clinton, Tennessee. Is there anyone to speak that would like to speak on ordinance number 683? Speak now or forever hold your peace. Public hearings adjourned. Regular meeting called order.
Councilman Queener.
Here.
Councilman McBride. Councilman Harrell.
Here.
Councilman Gann.
Here.
Councilman Hatmaker.
Here.
Councilman Manus.
Here.
Mayor Scott Burton.
Here. Do you hear a motion for the review and approval of the agenda?
Salute.
Having a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. This evening, the prayer will be given by Vice Mayor Gann. Before the prayer, we will be given a just a moment of silence in memory of Councilman McBride's mother. She passed away. Larry will do the prayer.
Our Father, we thank thee for those that have gone before us and laid the groundwork for us to be what we are today. We pray that as members of this community, that we may leave the same thing for those that follow us. Help us to make Clinton a very special place, even more special than it already is, by making appropriate decisions and doing what you would have us to do. Lead, guide, and direct us now as we go about our business and be with us in all we do for the night, and we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge...
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Larry. Do I hear a motion for the review and approval of the amendments of the previous meeting dated January 22nd, 2024?
Salute.
Having a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. At this time, we'll recognize visitors and citizens. With any complaints or praises, we ask you, if you do approach the podium, as you give your name and address, that you have three minutes to speak. Yes, ma'am, if you state your name and address, please.
Lady of Bollinger, 203 Barlow Road. We are here from Clinton Optimists. There are some issues that we are wanting to get resolved. We're getting kind of a runaround, and this was the next place to come for that. So, we're asking for a meeting. I know it can't be done tonight, but a meeting for us to work on getting all of this situated so that we, our kids, will be able to continue to play. If it doesn't get resolved, it looks like there is a lot that's leaving Clinton. Most of us were born and raised here and would like to keep our kids here.
I'm going to defer this over to our city manager as far as having a meeting at some point.
If you want to leave me your name and phone number or something somewhere I can contact you.
Okay.
It probably won't be tomorrow. I've got some meetings tomorrow, but I could, I can get in touch with you and try to set something up.
Okay.
If you would like and...
Yeah, I mean, there's, I think there's a whole group that's, well, I mean, there's several that want to speak and kind of let people know what's going on, I guess, that may not know what's going on.
Okay, or I can give you my card and if you want to just call me.
It's up to you however you want to do it.
Okay, let me just give you a card.
Okay.
There you go. Just give me a call and if, just leave me a voicemail if I don't answer, and I'll call you back.
Okay.
Do that. Great, okay.
And again, if anybody would like to speak about this topic, you're more than welcome to do it, but I will say that this council doesn't have any type of oversight on this that, you know, Roger and I spoke about a little bit earlier. The best avenue is what we just talked about. If y'all just have a meeting with Roger and maybe JB and talk about it in private, probably better. But again, if you want to step up and talk, you have the right to do that. Just state your name and address, please.
Hi, Madeline Miller, 152 Rolling Acres Lane. I think a lot of it is us as parents are wanting our voices to be heard for our kids because most of these kids are elementary school kids and younger kids and can't really speak for themselves. And a lot of it is that the coaches that we've had with this program since some of these kids were four and five years old are being pushed out, and our concerns as parents, as people that they're bringing into this club to run this club are not listening to the voices of the parents. You know, we each individually know what's best for our child, and while we might always, may not always agree on that, one thing we do agree on is that the club is not being ran for the kids of Clinton. And so, that's one of our biggest concerns. And, you know, with it being you guys are about Clinton, that's what you do, you know, and that's what we, we're wanting someone to help for our children. I mean, this is our next generation that's moving up, and what they're seeing and how they're being treated by adults is a problem. And we've asked for meetings with them before, and oh, no, we can't do that. Or, oh, no, it's a private meeting with just the board. Well, the problem with that is, is the board should be citizens here in Clinton that should be helping our future generations grow, and that's part of our issue is they're not willing to do that. And I mean, this is, you want to represent Clinton, then we need help, you know, with our kids because a lot of our kids are going to end up leaving. People have even talked about moving out of the county due to these individuals. So, we really need to, we need help from, you know, our city leaders.
You talking about?
I want to ask a question, ma'am.
Yeah, sure.
Ma'am, is the Optimus Club, do they still allow people to join? I mean, as far as...
They say they do. They say they do.
Because they used to be a part of it a long time ago. That's why I asked the question.
Yeah, they say, yes, anybody can join the board, anybody can be a part of it. The problem is, is my son's been playing there since he was four, and he'll be 10 this year, and I've offered and even tried to join the board and have, oh, well, no, we can't do that. They're only allowing certain board members to hold those positions, and every few years they switch places, but it's still just the same board members. And they're not allowing new members of the community, or even members who have been here for a long time at the community, to help with those kids. A lot of these board members don't even have children playing in the club anymore, which I don't necessarily always see as an issue, but you've got parents who are willing to help with this organization who have, you know, children that are playing, and they're not allowing that to happen.
I was always under the impression you could be a part of the Optimus Club. You might not be on the Board of Directors, but you could be a member of the Optimus Club. That's back in the day. Now, so it's going back a few years, but that was my thought.
Yeah.
Thank you, ma'am.
How many, how many members do you think are in the Optimus Club now?
We have no idea. We have no idea. We're not allowed to know that information. We have been told that if at any point in time we ask the treasurer for the information of where the money's being used for the kids, that we are allowed to have that information. This past season, I've asked for that in writing and in person three times and never received that information. So, we have no idea where the money's going to, that we contribute to this club. I personally have paid quite a bit of money to this club, you know, that I work hard for. I mean, I work for Clinton High School, okay? So, I know a lot about sports, and I know a lot about fundraising and helping and, you know, doing the things for the kids, but if this is supposed to be a city and public group and, you know, a member asks for that information, it should be provided, but they keep all of that under wraps. They won't allow us parents to know what's going on. It's, oh, it's none of your concern. Well, but it is. It's our money that's funding the program, and it's our children that are supposed to be getting the benefit of those funds, and we're not. We're, you know, our children need new equipment or, you know, fields conditions. Like, all of these things are what this money should be paying for, but we've yet to see where it's being spent, and we've asked several times, and we have no idea where the funds are going. There's been some concerns about misappropriation of funds by several board members. We can't prove it because we can't see what, you know, the treasurer has in the books, so we have no idea. All the accounts are completely kept away from the parents. We have no idea what's going on behind the scenes, but what we do see is that we've asked for fundraisers to get the kids like sweatsuits, you know, swag stuff for them or new equipment. Oh, no, we can't do car washes. Oh, no, we can't do that. So, how are we supposed to help build this program if we have a set of board members who are not willing to help build this program? I mean, you've got a lot of parents who have, you know, fresh new ideas to help our kids' program, but we're not allowed to do that because we're not allowed to join the board or we're not allowed to join the club. We're not allowed to do anything with the program. So, that's a lot of our concern is this is the only football program and cheer program that we have in the city of Clinton, so any of the children that are playing in this are of the city of Clinton, and we just, we just want that future generation to enjoy that. I mean, I cheered for Optimists when I was a child, so it's, you know, it's near and dear to my heart in more ways than one. My daughter cheers there, my son plays football there. So, it's, you know, it's something that we're really, really asking for help on.
I'm sorry you're going through this. I know it's frustrating as a parent, but, you know, Roger, our city manager, has about 40 years in recreation. He's dealt with Optimus Clubs and clubs in general. He'll give you some alternatives and some solutions when y'all meet. I promise you.
Yeah, and I was going to say this, ma'am. I do look forward to meeting with you and hearing what some of the issues are, but one thing, JB did have a meeting with, with some of the individuals a couple of weeks ago. One thing I did ask for and have yet to get it was a list of the members and the, whoever the board is, directors, and I've yet to receive that, so I will be requesting that again, so hopefully they will provide that to the city also.
I hope so. We've requested it several times, and they won't share that information with us.
Okay, and I will attempt to get that again too before we meet, hopefully.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good deal.
Appreciate it. Anyone else with football? Might be appropriate, I know with the, we're passing some ordinances this evening, I see some chicken people out there. Might be an opportunity, not, not you're chicken, but you, you like chicken. You're pro chicken. If you'd like to come up and just, just say hi and you support it or whatever you want to do or just, you know, just give the option.
I'm Delaney Davis, and I live at 1004 Fowler Street, and I'm the Chicken Crusader now, so I am here to make sure we can all have chickens in our backyard. Go chickens! Hope we're all on board, you two. Maybe one day. Keep praying on that.
I have nothing against chickens, but I'm not on board, okay?
I'll keep praying about it then. I have eggs at 1004 Fowler Street, you know.
Okay, thank you, Delaney. Thank you. Si, would you like to say anything? It's hard to follow up on that now, but just state your name and address, please.
Carl McMurray, 611 Skyline Drive here in Clinton, and thank you for considering this ordinance. I know this is just first reading. I've looked on the website. I've not found the packet which actually lists it. Is that available to the public through the website?
I think, you're talking about the ordinance or the...
Correct. I would like to read it for the second reading.
I believe the ordinance was in there.
It should be.
Yeah. I mean, I'm sure, I just, I haven't found it, so I'll just keep looking. But yes, of course, at the time of the second reading, I hope we have a positive vote, so thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on anything? Having communications, committee reports, city school board report, Ms. Johnson?
Good evening. I would like to officially offer the Chicken Lady a position with Clinton City Schools to be my new PR person because you can make us excited just about anything. So, good job. You need to come do some PR work with us. A couple of dates and good news to share. The state just released reward schools for 2022-23, and we are proud that Clinton Elementary School and South Clinton Elementary School both received that distinct designation from the state, and what they do is they look at both achievement and growth scores, and there's a nice little convoluted formula, but Clinton Elementary received 4.9 points out of five, and Clint, and South Clinton Elementary received three points, or 4.5 points out of five, and so they were, they were solid, did a great job, and so we are definitely celebrating them. Wanted to let you know that this Thursday, we will find out, last month I had told you about Clinton Elementary School being nominated as one of five schools in the nation for the NIET Founder's Award. If we are blessed enough to win that award, that is a $50,000 award for Clinton Elementary, and while it is, they've tagged Clinton Elementary, it really is representative of all three schools and our work that we do with NIET. It's just that the grant and the award requirements would make them choose a school, so it really will be on behalf of all three Clinton City Schools, but we will find out Thursday at lunch if we have won that. So, you may hear us screaming very loudly, or you may hear me screaming telling them why I think we should have won, but we're super excited about that. March the 28th, Commissioner Reynolds, our new education commissioner, will be coming to Clinton Elementary for that special ceremony that we had talked about where we had to reschedule due to the snow, so that is being rescheduled. And then I wanted to just publicly congratulate, on February the 15th, we did our Education Foundation Teacher of the Year banquet, so thank you to those who were able to come and support our teachers. Brandy Poor is our Teacher of the Year at Clinton Elementary School. She teaches third grade there. Drews Overton is our Teacher of the Year at North Clinton, and she is a speech and language teacher. And then Laura Rup is our South Clinton Elementary Teacher of the Year. She is a certified interventionist at South Clinton, and Jenna Sharp, the principal at Clinton Elementary, was our Principal of the Year for Clinton City Schools. And then finally, one piece of information about TESA funding. Part of the TESA formula is outcomes-based, and so we are given a certain amount of money based on how many students score proficient on TCAP in third grade, and then there's another award of money for students who weren't proficient in the third grade, but we moved them into the proficient category for fourth grade. And so, Scott Ray was very happy. He's going to bring you a budget amendment tonight where outcome funding for Clinton City Schools this year was $94,000. So, with that said, I'll call Scott up if you all don't have any questions for me. He does have a budget amendment.
Any questions for Kelly?
I just want to say congratulations.
Yep.
Hard work, junior staff.
Well, we surround ourselves with good people. I'll put my staff up against anybody, so...
You got a good one.
Put our students up against anybody, too.
Thanks, Kelly. Hello, Scott.
Hello. I'll be brief. I know that pleases everyone. You should have in your board packets, a budget amendment number four. Bottom line is I budgeted a surplus of $32,000 and change. The budget amendment does account for the TESA outcomes funding, and it reclassifies some expenditures. Some of the ways that we fund increases in expenditures are increases in revenue, and another way we fund an increase in expenditure is to reduce another line items expenditure.
Hear a motion for approval for budget amendment number four?
Salute.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Queener.
Yes.
Councilwoman McBride. Councilman Harrell.
Yes.
Councilman Gann.
Yes.
Councilman Hatmaker.
Yes.
Councilwoman Manus.
Yes.
Mayor Scott Burton.
Yes, budget amendment number four passes.
Thank you.
Any questions for Scott? Thanks, Scott. Clinton Regional Planning Commission report. Vice Mayor Gann.
The Board of Zoning and Appeals and Planning Commission both met on February 26th. Under the Board of Zoning Appeals applicant Alex McGrew requesting left side setback to zero for property located at 320 J.D. Yarnell Industrial Parkway. The property is zoned M2. It was, the request is for a variance on behalf of MHF Packaging to facilitate the purchase of that property that they're currently leasing and could not happen without that requested variance, and our city planner agreed that with a 25-foot easement as provided, it did not contradict the current legal non-conforming use of that. On the reasonableness of the request, the variance is the minimal action needed to recommend variance approval, and so based upon his recommendation and consideration, that was approved. And let me move to the Planning Commission. Applicant David Crowley requesting final plat review and approval for property located on Weldwood Drive. Property is zoned R1. This was basically re-dividing a two-lot subdivision into three lots, and that was approved. Amendment proposal to add multifamily residential to B4. This is along Severs Boulevard between the river and exit 122, and there was a great deal of discussion about this of whether we wanted to kind of retain this for commercial use or whether we wanted to allow residential use along it, and there was a lot of discussion about special exceptions and variances and everything. And so, based upon that, it was decided that we needed to defer this a month and look at what possibilities could come into place rather than rezoning the entire thing to B4. So, that was, that was passed by the, by the Planning Commission to consider that next, or to defer that until next month. On the consent agenda, Wanda Meredith requesting final plat review and approval for property located at 1260 Eagle Bend, and Thomas Evans requesting final plat review and approval for the property located at 702 Blockhouse Valley, and these were on the consent agenda, and they were approved. Applicant Kelvin Stokes requesting final plat review and approval for property located at Hillcrest Street. This is directly across from the softball, the new softball field at Clinton High School, and it would be an 11-plot housing development, and there was a lot of consideration about did that meet appropriate sewage considerations, and also that area has been somewhat subject to water retention in the past with floods and everything. There is no statistical information really on that, so we're kind of trying to determine what needs to happen to ensure that it does not fall into a flood area. And so, based upon those considerations checking on sewer and the flooding issue, it was decided that we need to defer that until further consideration could be made, and we'll take that up again next month. Applicant Joe Hollingsworth requesting site plan review and approval for property located at Charles Severs Boulevard. This is landscaping and altering of his parking lot, his office area up on the Boulevard, and that was approved. Geon Performance Solutions requesting site plan review and approval for property located at 1260 Carden Farm Road. Property is zoned M1. This was for two additional silos of the same dimension and size that are already there, appearance and everything, and based upon the fact that we already have two there, the Planning Commission approved the consideration for additional two silos. Applicant Anderson County Schools requesting acknowledgement and acceptance of the plat for property located at Dragon Drive and Douglas Lane. This is the, had to combine five parcels into one single parcel. This is basically simply a, an acceptance and clarification for, basically for record purposes where the softball field is. So, we needed to get that on the books as, as that particular situation, so that was approved by the Planning Commission. And then applicant Anderson County Board of Education requesting site plan review and approval for property located on Dragon Drive. This is for the, to approve a new welding facility at Clinton High School. It would be treated as a planned unit development, and so based upon that, the Planning Commission approved both preliminary and final plat, PUD site plan in a single motion, so they can go ahead and develop a welding center there. And then also, time was spent talking about the Chicken Amendment and the various aspects of it. It was presented to us in draft form, and it was approved or was recommended to send this to council with unanimous approval, and that's, it was a pretty lengthy night.
Any questions for Mr. Gann? Thanks, Larry. We want to have a CUB report. Catherine, do you have anything?
Since I couldn't be here in January, I just wanted to spend a little bit of a minute on 2023 and kind of give you guys a roundup of that. We held five events in downtown, and we have been working with Anderson County Tourism and their placer AI data that they can give to us. They track cell phone data and can let us know how many people attended those events, so we're estimating about 33,000 people attended five events in the downtown area. Our Facebook reach was also up 296%. We grew from 4,600 to over 11,000 people on our Facebook page, and we had one Christmas reel that reached 1.5 million people, which was crazy. So, we are quickly becoming a Christmas destination city in the town of Clinton, I do believe. We have, since we started, we've secured $450,000 in grant funding, and that goes anything from building and restoration of our, of our historic buildings, trees, economic development, entrepreneurial recruitment, and city, other city enhancements. We had 40 small businesses sponsor our events, and we had 72 community volunteers within our organization. So, we've come a long way in the three short years that we've been in operation. We also received two awards from the Mideast Tennessee Tourism Council, which covers 16 counties, so Joey Smith was awarded Volunteer of the Year for all the work that he does for our organization, which is a lot, if you know Joey. I don't even know when he has time to have a real job. And then we also received Best Event and Festival for our Mosaic Arts Festival, which is in partnership with both Anderson County Schools and our award-winning Clinton City Schools, of course, so we are proud to do that again this year. That is on April 6th. Before that event happens, we will have our art installation installed and our storybook trail installed, and I would like to invite each of you to come to that event, again, April 6th. It's going to be at the Library and Community Center, and we're going to do a ribbon cutting on that area at 10:30 a.m. That's it for me.
Any questions for Catherine? Thanks, Catherine.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. General Government Report, Mr. Houck.
Mayor, just a couple FYIs. The renovation plans for the old National Guard Armory project have been completed and submitted to the state fire marshal for approval. Once we get those back, we'll be ready to go to bid on that project. Phase three of our TAP grant, after four years and two months, we finally got our contract and executed it two weeks ago. So, that was just actually the contract, so now we go through the process that we are on phase one and two, so maybe here in a year or two, we'll be ready to start looking at construction documents. Activities for approval, as previously discussed, we have completed the traffic calming program policy and provided you with a copy for review. We feel this policy has incorporated the basic needs for our residential neighborhood traffic safety while remaining simple for design and implementation. Based on our discussion, we request, and requests from our residents, we would request approval and adoption of this policy.
Hear a motion for approval?
Salute.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, Mayor. On November 15th, 2023, city council approved a bid and contract to DWR Aquatics Incorporated for the construction of the swimming pool portion of JC Park Swimming Pool Innovations. DWR Aquatics has not fulfilled their contract obligations, and their contract was terminated on February 9th, 2024. We have successfully negotiated with the other bidder, Classic Pools and Spas, for a new contract for the pool construction in the total amount of $713,990.58. Based on the need to keep the project on schedule, we request acknowledgement of the termination of DWR Aquatics and the approval of the Classic Pools and Spa contract in the total amount of $713,990.58.
Hear a motion to approve?
Salute.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? Roger, can you explain a little bit, there's a difference in, you know, what our previous bid was to our current bid? I mean, are we going to get some more grant money for that or...
Actually, when we did the amendment last time, I think we were a little over $100,000 over budget, so we went ahead and asked for $300,000, knowing that we'd probably have some overruns, so right now that, we're still within, barely within budget. I'm sure, you know, we're dealing with a pool that was built in the early 60s. We're probably going to have some overruns as we get into things. I mean, it's, we'll be close... I mean, it's, we'll, we'll be close to being within budget, but probably by the end of the project, it's going to be tough to stay within budget, which we figured on a project this big and this old.
Okay. But the majority of what we have right now is going to be covered.
Yeah, I mean, I think the total grant is one point eight now. When we did the second amendment. Yes, one point eight.
All right. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Now, this is one JB's excited about. We have advertised and received bids for the kitchen equipment for the J C Pool concession. And after evaluation and the bids received, we recommend awarding the purchase contract to Windwalk Enterprise LLC in the total amount of thirty-five thousand, six eighty-one.
Here a motion to approve. Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Is this coming out of capital projects or is this coming out of our fund balance? Or is this part of the?
Part of the grant.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Congratulations, JB.
J C Park Playground. The playground equipment currently in use at J C Park was installed in nineteen ninety-eight and is the end of its useful life. We've advertised and received proposals for the purchase and installation of new playground equipment. After the evaluation of the bids received, we would recommend awarding the purchase and installation contract to Miracle of Kentucky, Tennessee, in the total amount of a hundred and seven thousand, nine sixty-six. Funding for this project will come from the Recreation Department's capital expenditure budget.
Here a mo.
Go ahead.
Here a motion to approve.
So moved.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Roger?
That playground, like I said, was put in nineteen ninety-eight under an L W C F grant, so it's seen its useful life. It's been a good equipment, but it is starting to show a lot of wear and tear and some safety issues. That's, that's why we're definitely needing to replace it.
What's the timeframe on this getting, being completed versus with the pool? So this will be up before the pool and stuff's done?
Yes.
You know, one thing that, just for the viewing audience, is we talked about, of course, we have the inclusive park inside Clinton, but there will be some pieces in the playground that will also be inclusive for those that, that.
They'll have swings.
Yeah, some swings and things in there, so. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, Mayor. Defer to Chris for the financials.
Thank you, Roger. So as of the end of January, we completed seven of our twelve months for the fiscal year. I can say that we are on target with our revenues. Expenditures are being held to, to our budgeted numbers. You'll see in a moment a budget amendment that mainly focuses on our capital expenditures that are, have been approved here at council already. A couple of things to note about the revenues is February is the biggest collection month for property taxes. So if you're out there listening, there's two days left, three days left to get your property taxes in without them being late. So try to do that. And the other thing is, and I'll talk about this here in a second, is another, one of our biggest revenue sources is local option sales tax. And we had a phenomenal receding month. It's really for transactions that happened in December. They get reported in January and given to us in, in February. So that was, that was exciting to see that trending upward because we had taken a couple of lumps in two, two of the previous six months in, in our local option, and it's more than made up for that.
But again, and I don't mean to interrupt you, but that, that was when we didn't have sales tax on food.
Correct.
During that time. So it wasn't, it wasn't anybody's fault.
No, absolutely not.
It was just the state implemented that.
And it's still, we're still trend, we're above where we were this time last year.
Yeah. Just, I'm very excited about the numbers. I saw them, I got them a little bit later, but.
Yeah.
Just for you, you all, just, we, we had a, a sales numbers of six hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. We just started getting numbers in half a million dollars every month. And so this is the first time the city's ever accumulated that much in one month. And that's, I think that's fantastic. Hopefully it's a trend that will continue to grow.
Yeah. Actually, when, when that report came in to me from the state, I said, well, they've, they've got the wrong city. Something, something's happened here. So I actually went into our, our banking app and wanted to see the money actually hitting the bank. And it's, that was our month. Great. So if you have any questions about the, the monthly financials, I'm, I'm happy to answer those. Again, the expenditures were at sixty-seven percent of our expenditures being fifty-eight percent of the way through the year, but we've had some large capital outlay with roads and things like that. So we're, our day-to-day operations were holding in check. So to go briefly to the, the local option sales tax, again, we had a six hundred and eighteen thousand dollar month. The highest month this fiscal year before this one was four hundred and fifty-eight thousand. So you can see that was a rather large month. Same month last year was four hundred and eighty-six thousand. So it was, it was a good month. I'm not sure what got sold or where it got sold, but it was, I guess consumers really got out in December. That completes the finance report. I've got a budget amendment if, when you're ready to hear that.
Any, any questions for Chris before we do that?
Good job.
Go ahead, Chris.
So I've got budget amendment number two for fiscal year twenty twenty-four. The expenditure increases are four million, eight thousand, one thirty-three ninety-three. To offset that, we have an increase of revenues of a million, three, three, five, oh thirty-three sixty-eight. Part of that is grant money, part of that is, a big chunk of that is the county's half of paving the industrial park. So we recognize that revenue. And the other offset is to decrease our assigned capital projects of one million, seven, seventy-eight, seven, eleven, twenty-five. We had computer equipment in reserves that we pulled from computer equipment reserves of fifteen, four forty-six, fifteen thousand, four forty-six. And then from unassigned fund balance, three hundred and fifty-six thousand, seven eighty-five for a total offset of four million, eight thousand, one thirty-three ninety-three. And in your report, I gave you some notes as to what each individual amount was, was for, hopefully that describes what it, what we did. I'll submit that for your approval.
Great. Here a motion for budget amendment number two.
So moved.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Queener?
Yes.
Councilman McBride?
Councilman Harrell?
Yes.
Councilman Gann?
Yes.
Councilman Hatmaker?
Yes.
Councilwoman Manus?
Yes.
Mayor Burton?
Yes, a budget amendment number two passes. Thanks, Chris.
Thank you. Thanks, Chris. Thank you, Mayor.
Does that mean anything else?
Yes, I got one more.
Okay.
I told you it was a busy month.
Keep it going.
Yeah, keep going.
You looked at me and I looked at you. I didn't know.
Public Works Department. Public Works Department, nineteen seventy-seven, John Deere road grader is out of service with potential transmission failure. This is a specialty machine with somewhat limited use. However, we would be unable to undertake some of the major improvement projects we have done without one. The grader could also have been used during the recent snow, snow slash ice storm. After evaluating several options for the replacement of this machine, we are recommending the purchase of a new Caterpillar one twenty G C motor grader from Stowers Cat at the total purchase price of two hundred and fourteen thousand, five ninety-five eighty. This purchase is on the Tennessee State Contract Schedule and will be funded from the Public Works Department Capital Expenditure Fund. Go ahead.
Wow, that's a, that's a dramatic pause.
I was, I was going to make a couple comments. Dwayne and Z did, did several evaluations of, of, which, like I said, this is a forty-seven year old machine that was bought, used when they bought it in the late eighties, early nineties. It is used, we, we've used it on some pretty big projects over the last four or five years that it really has saved a lot of money. When, when we had the Eagle Ben, when we had the storms that it caved in, you know, Public Works pretty much in-house rebuilt that road and we used that machine extensively. Harbor Drive, when we built it last year, they were able to use it and pretty much do that all in-house except the paving. So this, this piece of machine, we don't use it every day, but when they do use it, 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 it saves quite a bit of money. We could have really used it. I mean, we had a lot of complaints on Frank L Diggs Drive and J D Arnold during the snowstorm. It would have been a great piece of machine that we could have graded it. So it is a specialty piece of equipment. Now, that being said, this is a new one. That price is almost a forty percent discount on state contract. Actually, the salesman told Dwayne, you know, we buy it at that price, we could turn around and sell it in three years as a used piece of equipment and probably sell it for three or four hundred, three, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars and make money off of it. Some of the used ones that were ten years old, the same type of machine, was more expensive than what we're paying for this one brand new on state contract.
Plus you get to use it about, for about fifty years. I mean, it's not an everyday purchase, so.
Like I said, the one, the one that's broke down is forty-seven years old.
Yeah.
Any reclamation value on the old parts or?
Probably not.
You can go to the podium if you're going to speak. Here a, here a motion to approve?
So moved.
A motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
I think that's all I've got.
Any questions for Roger? Matt, you ready? Under first reading of new ordinances, have ordinance number six eighty-four amending C M C Title Ten Inclusive Animal Control ordinances. Would you like to speak on that? Just kind of give us the cliff notes?
So this animal control ordinance is the, is the actual municipal ordinance that allows urban chickens, the keeping of hens. The ordinance is proposing six hens per property on R one and R two zones under three acres or for any, any R one or R two. For the hens, it requires a hen house, a chicken tract or chicken tractor, a fenced lot or some way to keep the hens on the property. It also requires an annual permit of twenty-five dollars, which is pretty much what the surrounding cities require for the exact same program. And it runs on a calendar year for the pro, for the permits. Calendar year, meaning if you're in November and you buy a chicken permit for the first year, it's only good for a month. So it's best to wait until January to purchase the, the, the urban chicken permit. You get the full use out of it that way. Also, it will have provisions that, it makes provisions for non-commercial use. So you can't, you know, set up a little egg selling business from six hens. No, no home occupation. Animal, the permits will be managed by the code enforcement and the animal control, the police department will do any follow-up complaints or enforcement of, just like they currently do, enforcement of violations of the ordinance. Let's see, what else? It also recognizes the nuisance ordinance as they shall not become a nuisance as well as the rest of the. The entire ordinance animal control had been touched in some way, but this is essentially adding a chapter two, I'm sorry, a chapter three to an already existing animal control ordinance that had two chapters. So this is a new chapter three. Does that make sense? So made some minor corrections to the chapter one and two of the animal control. So that was that. And then to wrap it up, it refers to, one more thing I wanted to bring up. It refers to the denial, suspension and revocation of the, the conditions for that, how one would, you know, how one would be reviewed for renewal, denial or revocation of any permit. So essentially it's no roosters, six chickens, annual permit, fenced lot, chicken tractor or house. And that's pretty much sums it up.
We just got, we had some discussion in the planning commission about rental property.
Oh, yes, yes, yeah. Thank you for that. Yeah, it is an important part. So originally, we talked about this being owner occupied, single family dwellings only. But something that was a late proposal is that it would allow single family dwelling rentals to occur, to also have a permit as long as the landlord owner agrees to or signs off on, on allowing it at their property. And we would have a form letter of some sort that the landlord doesn't have to compose a new letter. We just says, I'm aware of the request for chickens and I authorize my tenant to have chickens as long as they follow the property maintenance and the animal control ordinance. And that's, which then pretty much means it's both owner occupied and rental properties in the R one, R two zone. Single family dwelling only can have the permits.
Do you have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Two questions for you. May I never ask you this? This, this is more of a crystal ball question, like you did in, in two different areas, Oak Ridge and somewhere else up north somewhere. Yeah. So out of your crystal ball, the homes we have here in town, what's, where you think the percentage of people that will, will, will have the roosters? I mean, you think it's ten percent, five percent? No, no, I'm, I'm sorry, chickens, I'm sorry. Chickens.
My guess it'll be less than one to two percent of the total houses.
Very few.
It's very few generally. I mean, there's very few now. I mean, they're, they are out there now. We know that.
I think we have one percent now, probably.
Yeah, that's, but they're, I don't, I don't believe there'll be people knocking down our door to get these permits. In fact, I think what'll most happen is misinformation that, hey, we can now have chickens and they just start to have chickens without permits. That's, that's probably the most logical, that's probably the most likely event that we'll address is people knowing that they could have chickens, but not knowing the process on how to, to get the, the permit.
So my, my second question is what's your, what's your estimate as far as somebody's, I only have chickens, I gotta get the coop or what the locomotive, whatever it's called? What, what, what do you think their startup cost is going to be for somebody?
Well, the biggest cost I think would be the chickens themselves. Honestly, the chickens themselves with the, the food and all of that. I didn't, I haven't priced it, but I can tell you from a permit cost, twenty-five dollars, if they build an actual chicken coop, it'll be based on our estimated cost of construction of such a, a building, an accessory structure, just like if you built a shed, you have an estimated cost of construction. So our permit for the construction of a chicken coop accessory structure that is permanent in nature would be based on our building permit fees. And normally that's anywhere from twenty-five to thirty dollars for most accessory structures, small, small accessory structures. And if it's a chicken tractor or something that you can move around the yard, that's just more of a piece of equipment and there's no permit for that, no inspection for the tractor, as long as there's a square footage requirement. So if you have six birds, then there's only, the, 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 the chicken tractor needs to be sized appropriately as, as defined in this ordinance to house all six birds healthily, in a healthy manner. So what's the startup cost? Anywhere from fifty to two hundred dollars, I would think someone could start a, the six chickens, you know, I would think.
Okay.
I don't have any personally, but that's what I'm guessing.
Okay. Any other discussion? Any questions for Matt?
I'm sorry.
Fireworks love.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Queener?
No.
Councilman McBride?
Councilman Harrell?
Yes.
Councilman Gann?
Yes.
Councilman Hatmaker?
Yes.
Councilwoman Manus?
Yes.
Mayor Burton?
Yes. Ordinance number six eighty-four passes on first of two readings. Ordinance number six eighty-five, this is amending the C M C Title Thirteen, Chapter Two, Junked Motor Vehicles.
Matt?
This is a, this is a desperately needed ordinance amendment. It's taking junked motor vehicles and removing the word motor from that ordinance and saying junked vehicles or inoperable vehicles. That means boats, trailers, hand carts, cars, you name it, anything that can be pulled, pushed or towed or driven, if it's. If it's junked, in, by definition, it provides several definitions of the present. It provides definitions of what junked is, what inoperable is. It provides clear direction on how to enforce the, the, the notice of violation and the removal process for both private property and public property. It sets the private property deadlines for 10 days to remediate or remove junked, inoperable, abandoned vehicles from private property in 72 hours, which is three days essentially, for vehicles that are on the street. That is, of course, does not account for those that are, the police already have, the police fire codes already have the, the authority to remove vehicles on public property that's presenting a safety problem, a safety concern. Parked in the middle of an intersection or something, we can move those immediately. But these are cars, it's parked on the side of the road, it's not posing an immediate threat, but it's inoperable. It has flat tires, it's on jack stands, license plates are expired, window shields are cracked, missing pretty much all the major parts. There's a lot of that here. And junk vehicles are typically something that is prevalent in economically impacted neighborhoods. And once it starts getting out of control, it spreads like a cancer in the neighborhood and becomes a real central theme of code enforcement complaints. So this ordinance is proposing an effective measure to address it, both on public property and private property. And that's what this is.
Do you hear a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion or questions to, to Matt? Roll call, please.
Councilman Queener?
Yes.
Councilman McBride? Councilman Harrell?
Yes.
Councilman Gann?
Yes.
Councilman Hatmaker?
Yes.
Councilwoman Manis?
Yes.
Mayor Burton?
Yes. Ordinance number 685 passes on first of two readings. Ordinance number 686, this is amending CMC Title 7, Chapter 2, and Title 12 Inclusive, adopting the current versions of the various fire, building, housing, et cetera standardized, standardized codes, I'm trying to say. Matt, you want to tackle this one?
I, I believe so.
You're on a roll.
I'm on a roll. So this is a major step for any city to adopt new construction codes. And the, the current code section that we're on right now is the 2018. And it was adopted in a, in a way that did not take into account necessary local amendments. And so with that said, the codes that were currently on, like I said, it's the 2018. And every three years, there's a new code cycle. So 2021 is the next set of codes for, that's been out, it's been published. It's, is the next set of codes that I'm proposing tonight that we adopt with the amendments that is specific to our jurisdiction, plus the addition of a swimming pool code that we didn't have before. As well as removing conflicting codes of the energy, conflicting energy codes with the state. Right now, we, with the 2018, we adopted it unamended. And so we're not even allowed to do that according to the state law when it comes to the energy code. So the 2021s is reverting back to what the state has adopted for the energy codes for insulation, finstration, and all of that. It sets up refund amounts for permits and permit fees, which we, we did not designate last time with the 2018s. It modifies the appendices for each code book. And just to give you a perspective, the code books, I thought about bringing them in here, but it's about, if they stacked them all up, it's, it's about that tall when you add them all up. So there, we're talking several codes here. It identifies the, and recognizes the administrative hearing officer that is yet to be brought to you, but it's a, an alternative form of the judge to, to administrative fine. So there's language added to our 2021 codes that will recognize the authority of that administrative hearing officer. Plus, it sets a design criteria that was not set in the 2018. Plus, it, it, and what everyone has been looking for is it significantly expands the property maintenance code to address nuisance properties, along with the junk vehicles, that's a part of it. But the nuisance properties with, with relationship to the effects of behaviors on property, not so much criminally, not going after them criminally for their behavior, but the effect of the behavior of not taking care of properties, that's what it's focusing on. It identifies what a nuisance property is, how to handle it, when decided to court. It also talks about offenses to the senses. And you, you can go through and see in the amendments where that's at. All right, the, it also adds definitions that did not exist for clarifying what modular homes, manufactured homes, and mobile homes are. Because there's a big discrepancy on, on the understanding of what we're talking about. And then the unsafe structures, there's clear language on, on what is actually considered an unsafe structure for, that would be eligible for demolition. And in last, and it, and it, like I said before, it ties the junk vehicles to the property maintenance code and, and ties the two languages together, so I don't have conflicting codes there. And that's essentially what we're doing. So it's all the building codes, the fire code, and the property maintenance code with the addition of the swimming pool code. I've, I've gotten some input from the public. I've incorporated some good ideas from the public, but by no means is it, um, and, and there are no significant changes besides what I have just told you from the 2018 to the 2021.
Hear a motion for approval?
So moved.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion or questions to Matt? Roll call, please.
Councilman Queener?
Yes.
Councilman McBride? Councilman Harrell?
Yes.
Councilman Gann?
Yes.
Councilman Hatmaker?
Yes.
Councilwoman Manis?
Yes.
Mayor Burton?
Yes. Ordinance number 686 passes on first of two readings. Second and final reading of ordinances, ordinance number 683. This is amending ordinance number 680 zoning code of the city of, city of Clinton. Hear a motion of approval?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? You just want to get a real brief statement of what this is about.
Yes, I can be brief on this one, yes. Alright, so it's basically six items to allow temporary use permits, to, to amend the zoning ordinance, to allow the chicken ordinance to exist, and repositions, and it repositions the, the, the yard setbacks for, for, what is it, R2? It, it, it modifies R2 setbacks to reflect the smaller lot size.
Okay. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Queener?
No.
Councilman McBride? Councilman Harrell?
Yes.
Councilman Gann?
Yes.
Councilman Hatmaker?
Yes.
Councilwoman Manis?
Yes.
Mayor Burton?
Yes. Ordinance number 683 passes on, on second reading. You know, one thing I didn't, I was going to talk to you about, and Bill, you might want to look and see if I'm correct on this. Leading to the, the minutes of the previous meeting, the first reading of 683, it said it was a unanimous vote and it wasn't last month. And I forgot when we started the meeting to, to, to bring that up. But I don't know if we needed to look at it real quick or we can, I felt like I needed to say something. I should have said it earlier. To amend. Well, I just wanted to make sure, can anybody look real quick? And let me just go through, anybody have any new business? Can we make an amendment that if, if there is, if it is unanimous, that that is, it was a, I think it was a, was it 6-1? Was everybody here last month? Were you here, Brian? He is a 5-1, by 5-1 vote. Well, Bill's looking.
Yeah, it is listed as unanimous, so you can make an amendment to.
Somebody like to make a, do you hear a motion to amend? What would that be? Amend the, the previous meeting minutes from, for first reading of 683, ordinance number 683, that it was not unanimous, but a 5-1 vote.
I'll make a motion.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed, motion passes. Any old business before us? Any new business? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Means adjourn.
I saw that, I'm like, there's too much going on, man.